Good evening and welcome to the April 16th, 2013 Planning Commission Meeting. Roll call please.
Chair Biassoti.
Here.
Vice Chair Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Marshall. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Samud.
Here.
Commissioner Mishra.
Commissioner, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is the minutes, March 19th, 2013.
Through the chair, I move the minutes to be approved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item two, communications.
There are no additional communications from staff this evening.
Thank you. Public comment is the third item on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on something that is not on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, public comment is closed. Item four, conflict of interest.
Through the chair. Sorry, I was late first. On item five D, I'll have to abstain as I manage a piece of property next door to the building on Whitman.
There you go. Anyone else? Item five, public hearings. Item number A is a request for temporary use permit to allow off-site construction, staging areas within the Crestmore neighborhood per section 1284.030 south of the San Bruno -- yeah, it's a municipal code. The applicant is the applicant, and staff report please.
Commissioner Biassoti and planning commissioners, this first item on your agenda has to do with a temporary use permit. The city of San Bruno is the applicant in this case, and the staff has assured that there's been proper and legal noticing. The request for a temporary use permit for the continued use of two staging areas within the Crestmore neighborhood is an item that is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. The two locations are located within the Crestmore neighborhood. One is located at 1999 Earl Avenue, which is the city fire station number 52, and this is located on the northeast corner of Sneeath Lane and Earl Avenue. The second location is property owned by the state of California, and it's located on the southwestern corner of San Bruno Avenue west of Glenview Drive and Skyline Boulevard. These two off-site staging areas have been used for some time, and the item is before you tonight because there's a requirement in our municipal code that there be an application for a one-year extension. These two off-site staging areas have been used for the rebuild of the Crestmore area since the fire of September 2010. The intent is to allow continued use of these two sites for infrastructure construction that's anticipated for the next phase or two of this site. Tonight, Harry Burrows, who's the project manager for the Crestmore rebuild, is with us, and he could provide further detail as necessary as you request in terms of the infrastructure detail that would be constructed during this next phase and beyond, and also the overall schedule. The staff has looked at the circumstances involved and, in fact, has added to the conditions since the last time you looked at this to address some concerns. For example, you notice under the proposed conditions that we've added some strengthening of conditions to address some concerns about dirt coming onto the nearby streets, say, for example, on Glenview Drive, and we're requiring, under condition three in the proposed conditions of approval, that there be decomposed granite or other rock that would be placed at the exit points, at the ingress egress points, to address dirt that may go on to the roadways, to better assure a clean roadway system in the surrounding area. With the proposed conditions, we have nine conditions in the staff report. We believe that the required findings for a temporary use permit can be made. The required findings include that, under the circumstances of the particular case, again, given the proposed conditions of approval, would not be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood; that the proposed use will not be injurious or detrimental to property and improvements in the neighborhood or to the general welfare of the city; and that the proposed use will be consistent with the general plan. The conditions, again, there are nine conditions, and I'll summarize some of them for you to give you kind of a sense of some of the conditions. Again, condition three among the nine would require that the decomposed granite or other rock be placed at the entry locations to Glenview Drive at the one staging location. Another condition, condition four, requires that the storage yard gates shall be secured to avoid them from being opened by potentially high winds in the neighborhood. Condition five requires that the applicant maintain the construction staging area in a clean and orderly condition. Condition eight indicates that the applicant shall repair any damage to the parking lot area at 1999 Earl Avenue, again, the fire station number 52 site, and that condition number nine is stated to say that the applicant shall comply with all best management practices for stormwater pollution prevention. So, again, this evening, we're recommending that you go ahead and approve this temporary use permit for one year. We believe, based on the information we've received from the project manager, that the one-year extension basically from April 2013 through April 2014 would cover this next phase in terms of infrastructure construction and required staging areas to support that. As you have any additional questions regarding the details of the project or perhaps the schedule, Mr. Burrows is here in the audience tonight and would be happy to respond to your questions. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burrows, would you like to speak?
Through the chair. Just one quick question. This is continued use. The site on Earl by the firehouse, has that been used? I mean, I've never seen any construction at the other site I've seen.
Yeah, it was used for one of the earlier projects, our Phase One water project, which was up at Sneeath, but for this last phase of work, it wasn't utilized.
My question there would be, is there any reason why we're not using the northern part of the parking lot instead of the southern part, so we're not right up against a residential house and may rather impact the firehouse than the residential house?
The northern portion of the parking lot is used by the firehouse. They do have a bay back there that they have to have ingress and egress for one of their fire trucks to get to the station.
Okay. Has a neighbor had any concerns with it? Have we had it?
We did properly notice this project, this request, and we've not received any comments on the noticing.
What kind of storage is it going to be in that lot? I mean, is it going to be a big fenced-in like the Glenview one?
We'll make them do a temporary fence there, a temporary chain link fence with the security slats in there for visual purposes. Most likely, it'll be storage for materials, pipes, valves, things such as that.
Anyone else? Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this project? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for conversation or revote.
Through the chair. Yeah, I'd like to make the motion that we approve temporary use permit 13-002 based on findings of fact one through three and conditions of approval one to nine.
Second.
We have a motion, the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Okay. Thank you. Item five B.
Oh, stand up. Thank you. It's a request for renewal of a use permit for condominium conversion per chapter 12 128.00, San Bruno Municipal Code, Marymont Place, and this is for 2081 Whitman Way.
Laura, go ahead.
Thank you and good evening. As you heard, the application is for renewal of a use permit that was approved by the Planning Commission in 2009 for a condominium conversion, so a conversion from an apartment complex into a condominium for sale product. So I'd like to briefly go over the background of the project to refresh your memory a little bit. This is a 48-unit apartment complex. It's at the corner of Whitman Way and Cortland Drive. It was built in 1964, and until the recent improvements, there were very few improvements to the site over all of those years, as well as some deferred maintenance. In 1981 and 1982, the previous owners were approved for a tentative and final tract map to subdivide the property into condominiums. However, at that time, they elected not to proceed with the conversion. So that map is still in effect. It was recorded and is a legally binding document. But here in San Bruno, they are also required to have a use permit or a local approval to proceed with the condominium conversion. So back then, in 1981 and '82, the use permit from that time was withdrawn, and so any future conversion to condominiums required a use permit. And so that subdivision approval is in effect, but the use permit was not in effect. So that set the context for the most recent owners. In 2009, these current owners applied for an architectural review permit and the use permit to upgrade the exterior of the site and also finish the conversion process. The overall project was always intended in two phases. The first was to be the exterior improvements, with the second phase to be the interior remodel of the units and the conversion, the legal conversion from apartments to condominiums. The exterior improvements, as you're probably aware, are substantially complete. The building permit has not been finalized yet, but staff has been working with the applicant on those final corrections in order to get that building permit finalized. The owners have expressed their intent to move forward with the condominium conversion and have submitted materials to staff that are included in your packet tonight for consideration, and they also have begun the process of applying for the building permit if the renewal is approved tonight. So the use permit was approved in 2009 by the Planning Commission, as I mentioned, and that was set to expire in December of 2012. So prior to that date, the applicant requested a renewal of the use permit. The city's municipal code outlines the provisions for renewal of a use permit, and in this case, the use permit can be renewed until December of 2013, so December of this year that we're in now, for a total of four years from the original approval in 2009. So in order to vest or to activate the use permit for the condominium conversion, the applicant would have to meet all of the conditions of approval and pull a building permit prior to the expiration. So that's the trigger of the use permit going into effect and the condominium conversion actually starting, is the pulling of that building permit. And so I'd like to review the applicant's proposed phasing for the condominium conversion process. This is described in your staff report in the table in Exhibit B, so I would encourage you to turn to that and look at it as we go through. The first step in the conversion process would be two meetings for tenants and neighbors. This is to implement some of the conditions of approval from 2009, as well as to meet the municipal code requirements. So this would include tenants and neighbors. The Planning Commission requested that neighbors be included in these meetings at the previous Planning Commission hearing in 2009, so if neighbors were interested, they would be invited as well. So these meetings would take place this July of 2013. They would be offered on two different nights to accommodate different schedules with the different, with the same content being covered on two different nights. The topic at that meeting would include the items in the bullet points here above the table, and that would be a review of the schedule of the move-out notices, the construction and the sales schedule, a contact person during construction for the interior remodel of the units, the renumbering of the units. You may recall that the fire department is requiring that the units be renumbered as part of the conversion process, so that aids, right now, they're just numbered from, you know, like 100 straight through, and so they're going to be renumbered, so it's easier for safety personnel to locate the units according to buildings, floors, and unit numbers. The municipal code also requires assistance to the tenants, including a comprehensive market survey of available rental options, so that has to be provided by a qualified professional to them. And then, a condition of approval was included in 2009 to inform the applicant of affordable housing programs that are available to them, and so you may recall this discussion. These are formal affordable housing programs with income restrictions, so we want to make sure that the tenants are aware of affordable housing options that may be available to them. And then also, at these initial meetings, there'll be an overview of the relocation benefits and an additional opportunity for tenants to talk to the property owners about what that process is going to be. So then, the conversion is proposed to proceed in four phases. The dates for the first phase are set, and future phases are subject to change with approval of the community development director, but they are included here, so the Planning Commission can see how this would be phased, you know, with changes if they were approved by the director. But the Phase One dates really would be set if the renewal was approved tonight, and so I'd like to walk through those so that you can understand how this would be implemented and how the conditions of approval would come into effect. So if we look at Phase One on the table, you can see the first item would be a notice to vacate, so the owners are required to give tenants a four-months notice, so they would receive that notice on August 1st of this year, four months before they're required to leave. And then there would be a resident meeting during that same month, during the month of August, at a time that would be approved by staff, and staff would attend. And that notice, that meeting, I'm sorry, would be for the people that are affected by that phase of the project, so it'd be specific to those folks. And the idea of that first meeting would be to have a qualified professional in attendance, so that would be somebody like a broker, somebody that's familiar with the commercial real estate market, that would be approved by staff in advance, and that person would be required to be in attendance to help those residents in that phase understand what their housing options are, provide them with some choices. This is the relocation assistance that's described in the code and in the staff report. And also, at that meeting, there would be a review of the specific relocation benefits, and so that's the opportunity for the residents to communicate with the owners on exactly how that process is going to work for each individual household that's eligible for benefits. If additional follow-up meetings were required between tenants and the owners, then that would be the time to really initiate that and make sure that those meetings are happening. And then, following through on the table, the relocation funds would become available in November, and then the last day for move-out would be four months after the notice, December 1st of 2013. And then there would be a pre-construction meeting that would be required, and so that's required between the owners and city staff, and at that time, they would have to provide documentation to us that all of the benefits that were required have been distributed to the tenants in that phase and that all conditions of approval have been met. And then if that happens, then they would be able to begin construction of the remodeling of the units of that phase of the project. They expect that to take about four months, and then those units from that phase would be released to the market, so they'd be put up for sale as condominiums in February of 2014. So you can see, the Phase One of the project is the largest phase, and they vary a little bit. The flip side of this table, the next page of the staff report, has the different phases and which units and which buildings are included in each of the phases. So this approach of this kind of meeting schedule and notice and relocation benefits would continue until the conversion is complete, and that is expected to happen in early 2015. So it's basically, the conversion process really starts in August with the notice of this year and continues on until February of 2015, when the last phase of units is expected to be released into the market for sale. So as you will recall, the tenant relocation benefits are a very important part of the conversion process, and they are included as Exhibit D in the staff report. This is the same language that was included in the original approval in 2009. I just wanted to make sure it was included in your packet so that you would be reminded what was approved at that time, and the public and the tenants would have easy access to those relocation benefits. So that's in your Exhibit D. I'd like to turn now to public comments for the project. Staff sent the required legal notice to every, all the property owners within 300 feet and posted notice in the area of the Shelter Creek complex. We also sent a letter and legal notice to the tenants of the complex at the same time as the legal notice, and we also sent the staff report that you have before you tonight to all of the tenants last Friday when we distributed the overall packet. So staff did receive one phone call, and a gentleman was just asking about the parking and if that was going to change with the project, and no, there are no additional physical changes to the site that are associated with the condominium conversion from the outside. The condominium conversion is related to the inside of the project and the legal conversion to for-sale units. This gentleman did not have any other questions or concerns. So I would like to talk a little bit about the conditions of approval. This is a renewal of a previously approved use permit, so staff has not proposed any substantial changes to the conditions of approval. However, we do propose some new language to help explain or clarify how the conditions would be met. So as we've been working with the owners through this process in preparation for the conversion, we realize that it would be helpful to explain some of these items, both to the Planning Commission, as well as to the residents and to the public, so people will know what to expect as the project moves forward. So if you want to turn to your conditions of approval in the staff report, you will see that the 2009 language is included in the same order and with the same text that was previously approved. There are some minor changes in regards to items that are outdated, striking out the architectural review permit, for example, that was previously approved and is now almost complete, and then new language is included here in bold text. Okay? So as you go through, you can see that we've made some changes to explain how some of the items are going to be implemented. There are several references to Exhibit B, and that's the table and the exhibit that we just looked at, so when people are looking at the conditions of approval, they have a reference point, so they know kind of what to look up to see how that particular condition is proposed to be implemented. We've also included in a couple cases some triggers, so the time at which that item has to happen, for example, a trigger of an action happening before the building permit issuance for Phase One. And so staff has attempted to improve the clarity of some of these conditions to make it easier for implementation as the project moves forward. So in looking at the renewal request, staff analyzed the materials that were provided by the applicant. We reviewed the code requirements and the municipal code authority for renewal, as well as state law requirements, relocation benefits, and reviewed the project history up to this time. Staff does recommend that the Planning Commission grant the renewal of the use permit based on the findings of fact that are in the staff report and the revised conditions of approval with the clarifications in the bold language implementing those conditions from 2009. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Through the chair. On condition three, when is that required to take place?
Sorry, let me get there. The draft CCNRs have been received by staff, so we had the initial draft at the time of the 2009 approval, and then we've received a revised draft since that time. And then the actual creation of the HOA, as I understand it, is a legal kind of question of when that happens and the exact timing that I believe is regulated by the Department of Real Estate, but the applicant or perhaps the city attorney could elaborate if you'd like.
Through the chair, that is correct. It is prescribed by the Department of Real Estate. I don't actually have the specific number of days in mind, but it's triggered by other things that are going on in the condominium conversion process, and I'm sorry, maybe the applicant knows the answer to that question. But obviously, the CCNRs are developed and have to be approved by the DRE before any of the lots go on the market.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Would the applicant like to speak on this project?
I'm Jasper Wadia, and I want to thank all of you guys to take the time to attend to our requests, and we are very excited to really get to the project and get 48 families into the apartments now. It's really very interesting, and we have spent a lot of time and money on it to make it worth the new people to come in and live in there as homeowners.
Any questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, Judge Johnson. Okay. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this? One at a time, if you can take your podium and give us your name, please.
First off, if you give them a renew date...
Excuse me, one second. Can we get your name, please?
I'm James Reinig. I live at 2081 Whitman Way, apartment 138.
Thank you very much.
If you give a new date, you should reset the benefits owed to all the current residents. These people are San Bruno residents. They are the people you're supposed to be protecting. I moved to this apartment building in 1977. My wife died there. I was planning on doing the same. During the past two failed attempts to convert, the city had a heart then. We'll see if you have a heart now by your actions tonight. Back then, they offered me above and beyond what the state allowed, which, that's all you're offering us. Your offer is nothing but what the state makes you offer us, so let's get that straight. And in the last failed attempt, I was offered $100 a month for every month I've been there. That's a lot of money. I feel I'm getting kicked out of San Bruno right now. That's a fact, and everybody here is getting kicked out of San Bruno, and all 47 of my fellow residents are getting kicked out of San Bruno because the rents are sky-high now in San Bruno for apartments. They are not anywhere near what they were in 19, in 2009. They are $500 to $700 more a month. Your benefits don't add up anymore. $6,600 for four months is a joke, and you also add that you will help us move, you'll help us move out of San Bruno. You will not be able to help us stay in San Bruno. You are kicking us out of San Bruno. That's a fact. The city of San Bruno with a heart. If you knew this, you won't have a heart for me and my other 47 residents. You're kicking us out of San Bruno, and as far as I'm concerned, you're not helping San Bruno, you're only helping yourselves if you pass this without at least resetting the benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please. If you give us your name, please.
My name is James O'Connor.
When you get to the podium, please.
My name is James O'Connor. I live in apartment 136 at 2081 Whitman Way, and my concern is primarily what I see going on around me. I've been a tenant there for the last two years. I've been through the process of the conversion, and at this time, I'm looking around me, I see elements of the conversion they've put up to address issues in the building that are already deteriorating. Some of these items have only been up six or eight months, the wall sconces around the buildings. They've installed a fire suppression system, which is simply exposed pipes running all through the building. They've actually broken the fire barriers between walls to allow the pipes to come through and never sealed the barriers back. I cannot believe that the, regardless of the Exhibit C, the intent of the letter, to provide you with information about... with information about the quality of the product and the workmanship, I've lived there for two years, and I don't see either one. Primarily, the labor has been provided by day laborers with possibly one or two knowledgeable individuals working with them. And the quality of the finished work is nonexistent. It's unbelievable what these contractors have gotten up and walked away from. So, I'm really concerned with the overall project and how it's going to end up seeing the quality of the input of labor and the materials that are existing in the building at this time.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to speak?
My name is Kevin Duca. I've been in construction, pretty much retired from it for 30 years. And I pretty much watched all the labor being done there. I've watched stuff being uncovered with dry rot under it and then covered with nobody even looking at it. I mean, these guys have just been covering up stuff, and nobody's looking at it. And I think that the tenants themselves should be on at least a firm date, you know, when they're going to be, have to move out, because this August 1st thing ain't going to happen. And I already know, I talked to the guys that were working out there, they were getting paid cash. Okay? So, that's not right. I'm a union man. I was a union my whole life. And these guys that were working out there were getting paid cash. And they didn't even know what they were doing. I mean, I had to give a guy, I gave guys books out there, how to do plaster, how to patch plaster, how to do this and how to do that. They didn't even know what they were doing. And now, these guys are going to come in here and do what? You know, I mean, so far, the exterior, if you go down the first and second floor of the front building, you'll look up and you'll see plaster ceilings that are held up with screws and washers with cracks in them all the way through. They should have tore all that out, and it should all have been redone. Because I've done that for 30 years. I worked high-end work. I worked for, I ran work at the airport. I ran work in the city on high rises. And I've seen, I've been retired, unfortunately, because I've been disabled. I've been watching these guys, and it's the worst labor I've ever seen in my life. And for these guys to start going into the interior is ridiculous, because they haven't even done anything right on the exterior. So, that's all, you know, basically, you know, I mean, we were told we were going to get a certain date, and we've been dragged on through the mud for one or two more years. And it's kind of stressful, you know? I've got my kids living around the corner. You know what I'm saying? And my kids, you know, live around the corner with their mother, and it's convenient for me, but I'll have to move away if I have to leave. But that's irrelevant. The bottom line is here is that the labor there has been done by non-union labor, and a lot of it's been done in cash under the table. And the reason why the general contractor left is because he wasn't getting paid. Every time he uncovered something, he found dry rot. And every time he found dry rot, he would ask the owner, you know, he needs more money. And he didn't get paid, so that's why he pulled out. You know, I used to run work. I ran work for 16 years for people like Webcor, Dinwiddie, all the high-end companies. And I know what I'm talking about. So, I think these guys that are doing the job right now, so far haven't met the qualifications to even do the exterior right, let alone do the interior right. And that's all I got to say about that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, public comment is closed. Bring it back to the commission for conversation or a motion. Through the chair. Kevin.
The concerns of the residents as far as the construction or, you know, the exterior renovation, if you will, certainly raises a red flag for me, as I've been in construction pretty much my whole, my whole life. Is there, I would have to assume that with the renovation on the exterior, there had to have been some sort of inspections through the building department, I would assume. Would that be correct, if that was a question for staff?
Commissioner Chase, that would be correct. So, as, as they're doing work at that site with benefit of a permit, a building permit, there would be inspections done.
So, to address the last resident's concerns regarding, you know, the dry rot, covering it up, uncovering it up, whatever, how would we, or how would the building department, you know, be able to inspect something like that where it's been covered, uncovered and covered? You know what I'm saying? It's very difficult. So, I'm kind of concerned about what I'm hearing from the residents in regards to the construction part of this or the renovation part on the exterior alone. You know, it makes me certainly give a reason for pause and concern.
You know, again, as, as work is being done at that site with benefit of a permit, there would be regular inspections, and the contractor would need to contact our building division, request inspections in order to have a final. So, prior to any final inspection on the site, on the project, we would certainly do the required inspections.
One more question. Again, it goes back to the concerns of the residents as far as the construction is concerned. Is there, is there a way that, you know, as this last resident, you know, was pointing out that, you know, there are certain areas that are, I guess, fairly obvious?
I've never seen an inspector there.
No, but I mean, as far as the, the work is concerned, where, you know, there's screw, you know, screws with washers that are, cracks going all the way down and things of that nature. I mean, if that's fairly obvious to the naked eye, I would think that perhaps maybe another inspection of whatever that work that was performed might be in order to make sure that stuff is okay.
You know, in terms of follow-up, we can certainly check with our, our chief building official and, and ask that our building division staff go out and take a look at the site, take a look at the project, and do a follow-up. We'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else?
Through the chair?
Yes, please, Laura.
To elaborate on the issue of the dry rot, we did receive a concern about the dry rot conditions. And so, the building official actually opened a code enforcement case and did go out to the site and review some of those dry rot conditions, and a separate building permit was issued to alleviate those. So, several issues were alleviated through that separate building permit. There was also a building condition report that was done by an engineer at the time of the initial submittal for the condominium conversion as a required item for the application. And so, that is in the file. So, there is dry rot conditions that were identified in that report that have to be rectified. That's actually one of the conditions of approval for the project. So, the applicant will be required to submit documentation to staff demonstrating how those dry rot conditions were remedied, by whom and at what time. So, that's a condition that's on the project right now. The building official has indicated to me that the items that he has inspected himself have met the building code standard and may not meet the visual standard that some of us would prefer, but the things that he had seen had passed the building code standard.
Yeah, so, Laura, so then, the dry rot that has been noted, has that been repaired? Or is it in the process of being repaired?
The majority of that that staff became aware of, I believe, is now repaired, and that building permit has been finalized for that separate dry rot work. There was a very first dry rot repair permit, the very first building permit that was issued on the project, and some of that was wrapped up into a future phase. So, that's why staff added that condition, that all dry rot work had to be summarized and submitted back to us to make sure we could see that all of those items had been addressed.
And is there a building permit on file now for the exterior work that's being done there?
Tear down those plaster ceilings, I guarantee it's a lot.
I'm fine, thanks. Barry?
No.
Anyone want to bring a motion for it? Care to bring a motion for it?
I'm still thinking about it.
Can I ask a question, staff? As far as the payments to the current residents, the buyouts, that's controlled or mandated by state. We don't have any, do we have any discretion on that?
The minimum requirements come from state law and are essentially duplicated in our local code.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Please.
I'd like to ask a member of the applicant to come forward. I'd like to ask a question.
My name is Arjun Bhagat. Hi.
Do you, do you know if any of the construction workers were paid in cash?
Absolutely not. We've had contractors, we, part of what we're going to be having to do is when we sell these, we have to have all our expenses to show as part of, otherwise, we'll be, you know, we can't generate cash anyway, and if we don't have it in our taxes. This is not a company owned by one person. It has a bunch of members. It's an LLC with a disparate number of members in it. There would be no way to generate cash that we, that we could do. We had, we have a contract, we had a contractor, we've had multiple contractors. We paid them according to the contract. We needed to have completion documents, which the city had to provide before we made the final payments. So, please keep in mind that we are very aware that over the years, condo projects, if they're not done right, of a certain, once a condo project is of a certain size, and you start selling the units, there's a bunch of lawyers that run around after that to try and do class action lawsuits. And for us to, to purposefully and willfully do something that would leave us exposed would be completely penny wise and pound foolish on our part. I am absolutely surprised as to the claims that have been made that we paid cash, because that would make no sense for us to do. In fact, the fact that we get the work done, we have proof that we've done it, provides us with some modicum of protection if and when we get into a class action suit, two or five or seven years downstream. So, it would be, we're talking about what? A few dollars to save and risk ourselves a potential of a class action that would just make no sense for us to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions I can answer?
Yeah, I have a question. I just, you don't pay the workers, right? Your contractors with the general contractor, he pays the workers.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Can we find out who the general contractor is?
You can ask them after the meeting. Right now, public comment's closed.
You want to walk out? Because he didn't get paid.
Okay, once again, we're back to our conversation here. No.
No.
After the meeting, if you'd like.
Through the chair. Kevin, just a question. Hypothetically, what if none of the commissioners decide to comport with the motion? Where does it go from there? Or would there be a motion to, you know, deny with, it's been so long.
Without prejudice.
Thank you very much.
Through the chair, I think the commission would have a number of options. Of course, you could make a motion to approve, you could make a motion to deny, or you could make a motion to continue the matter and request that staff come back with some additional information or provide you with answers to additional questions that you might have and to address some of the issues that came up today. So, those are three of the alternatives. There, there might be more, but those are the three that come immediately to mind.
Through the chair. I, I think some issues have been brought up here that are, that are serious issues. On the other hand, I think the, through the presentation of staff and the, the applicant, that it's clear that, that there is a process that's being followed that seems appropriate. And in fact, if there are construction malfeasance issues, those can be dealt with by the labor law, and construction inspection issues can be dealt by, dealt with by complaints forwarded to the city staff, who has every interest in having the construction being done properly. Because of that, I will move that the commission approves the renewal of Permit 9-6 based on findings of fact 1 through 3 and conditions of approval 1 through 36.
Do you want to, one second? Okay.
The chair, the chair can second.
I'm going to second, and I'm going to second based on the fact that these gentlemen realize that there is a legal responsibility to construct this property correctly, because there's an ongoing potential for lawsuit. So, they already know that, and they're already assuming that liability. The work that's being done and how they're being paid is not how politics work.
The city has a black car. No car at all.
It's not our responsibility, how people are paid. We're here to look at a construction project, not how it's funded. So, I'm going to go ahead and second that. So, that said, all in favor?
I have a question. I'd like to make a comment if I could. I think the issues that have been raised here are serious issues. There is a path to remedy those issues. And at the same time, there's a path to go forward and resolve this project and get, get a conversion accomplished that should have been done in 2009 if it weren't for the economic recession. And so, I would argue for the commission to approve it and allow the complainants and staff and other, other parties, such as the state labor interest, to handle it in the way that's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move to a vote, Dave, did you have something you wanted to include? You look like you had a comment.
No, I did not.
Thank you. All right. You have a motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead and say it, opposed.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Right, so that motion fails on a 2-2 vote, and at this time, somebody might want to entertain making a different motion.
I'd like to motion that we continue this item to a further meeting.
I would second that motion.
Oh, I'd like to, through the chair.
Please.
What, what would be accomplished between now and a future meeting?
Personally, I would like to see some, some proof that what some of these residents have come up with as far as, you know, substantiate what they're saying is either true or not true in regards to the, the workmanship there, in regards to the overall quality of the project. I am not opposed to the conversion of it. I think it's, it's a good idea. But I am opposed to having it done in such a way that it is not up to the standards that it needs to be, whether it's the building code standards or whatever, but there's it is not up to the standards that it needs to be, whether it's the building code standards or whatever, but there's, like I said, I've been around construction a long time, and you hear this, these comments from residents, you know, it raises a red flag for me. So, I personally would need some, like to see some, you know, follow-up on the concerns that the residents that came to the meeting tonight put forward.
So, I, through the chair. So, I, I would approve this if we could create a, a conditions of approval whereby a member of the building department could meet with the residents, which they can share their concerns to the building department. And perhaps at that point, they can take a look at what, areas of concern. And that it's either gonna be that's built correctly or it's not built correctly. But, uh, he brought up some pretty good concerns and I, I'm not against the conversion, but I am against shoddy workmanship.
I have a question for the city attorney, if I may. These issues have been brought up in a public hearing. They're public record, they're public comment at this point. If these folks move ahead with this project and don't correct these things, this is like the beginning of the basis of the ground, the basis of a lawsuit if it's not corrected. Wouldn't that be correct? The potential of?
Well, it's very difficult to determine in advance what somebody hypothetically might, might sue for. As we all know, anyone can sue anyone for anything. They might have a good reason, they don't need any reason to do it. So, it's very inexpensive to file a lawsuit. So, yeah, in my view is we don't really have any particular comment on the applicant's assertion that they would be exposing themselves to risk by doing or not doing certain things. I think the issue before the planning commission tonight is whether you want to continue the proposal in order to get some additional information and get some of the, some facts regarding the allegations that were made at the meeting to satisfy everybody that the work is being done properly according to code and in compliance with state law.
Through the chair, please. I, I don't like the allegations anymore, at least I believe. I don't like them anymore than anyone else. I'm equally concerned about them. At the same time, having, having been involved in construction and construction management for many years, it's been my experience that there are procedures and methods and people to take care of all of these issues separate from whether, whether a condominium conversion goes forth or not. If the, if the convert, assuming the conversion were to go forth, they still have to have the building in, in good order. And, uh, I think if we direct the staff to, uh, meet with the residents and examine the areas that are allegedly out of order, I'm not sure if that would help. Having said that, let me ask the question of the director. What do you think about that? Is that a, something that, first of all, is it a reasonable condition? And secondly, is it something that could be accomplished?
Commissioner Peterson and commissioners, presently in the conditions of approval, if you refer to them, you'll notice under conditions eleven and thirteen that Associate Planner Russell referred to in her staff presentation. There are existing conditions that are before you this evening that address the deficiencies. I'll refer to them as deficiencies that have been already identified. And conditions eleven and thirteen require that those deficiencies be corrected prior to the sale of the units. And as some of you have already indicated, there are requirements in place that if fulfilled, should assure that the structure is constructed, reconstructed in accordance with the Uniform Building Code. And I think conditions eleven and thirteen support that statement. I'm not sure that it would be beneficial necessarily to meet with the various property tenants at this time. I think what's more important is to, to make sure that these conditions are satisfied, that the reconstruction, construction that occurs on the site is done according to the Uniform Building Code, meets local and state law requirements. There are really a couple of different ways to proceed with this. There are conditions here that I think would address your concerns. If you would like perhaps to continue the item, you could do that as well. And we could consult with our chief building official, our building division staff, and get an update in terms of inspections that have been done on the property. Even make sure that our staff goes out and, and does an inspection at this time or during this interim period and report back to us, which then we would report back to you at a subsequent meeting. So, we have conditions of approval that I think address the matter. To give you more assurance, though, we could do an inspection, a general inspection in the meantime and report back to you, assuming that you would continue the item. So, those are two ways to go.
Through the chair. The, the point that I'm looking to, to hear, some way to address is if there's an individual who's on the property who believes there is dry rot that has been uncovered and recovered and has not had the benefit of inspection, through these conditions in eleven thirteen, do you think you could implement a procedure where you would ask him, where are these areas and take a look?
We could certainly attempt to, to meet with tenants. My only concern is, you know, how do we open that up? I'm a little bit concerned about how many tenants, et cetera. We could certainly go to the site, do an inspection. We would certainly be open to hearing from the tenants. There's no question about that. I'm a little bit concerned about the extent of, of comment, the level of inspection that would ensue, et cetera. There, there's no question, though, that our staff would wanna make sure that the inspection is thorough, complete, accurate. So, I would offer, again, we've got conditions in place now. We could, you could move forward with those conditions if you're wanting a little bit more comfort in terms of existing conditions. We could certainly go out to the site, direct our staff to go out to the site, do a further inspection, gather some information from tenants, perhaps people we heard from tonight at this meeting, and, and do some investigation, some level of investigation. There's no question that we wanna make sure that the inspections are thorough, complete and accurate. No question about that.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
I, I can move forward on this.
Big a question?
I can move forward on this.
Okay. So, shall we?
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to introduce, uh-
I'm, I'm sorry. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. I think there is a pending motion on the floor.
I withdraw.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Motion withdrawn. Barry?
I'd like to introduce a motion to approve the renewal of use permit nine dash six based on findings of fact one through three and conditions of approval of approval one through thirty-six. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
I can second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
I'll tell you why if you wanna know.
Okay, we, motion is passed.
For the record, the motion passes on a three-to-one vote.
On a three-to-one vote. Is there an appeal period on that?
Ten days.
Ten-day appeal? Yeah. And there's a ten-day appeal period. Okay. So, we move on to item six, city discussion, city staff discussion?
Chair Biasori, this city staff discussion item really has to do only with the commission selecting your architectural review committee members for this next month. So, if you could do that, we would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Wait, okay, just the volunteer.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, planning commission discussion, anybody got anything? I have one for staff. At the last couple of planning commission meetings, we've talked about sustainable landscaping and low-water-use landscaping. And I've noticed that we've done like a demonstration project in front of the firehouse.
Yes.
With, you know, drought-tolerant plants and whatnot. I was wondering if we, as a commission, can pass on our request to city council that they look at maybe replacing the lawns around the city hall and the library with a similar type of drought-tolerant landscaping.
Okay. We'll pass that along.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anybody else? This meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.